Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the September 2nd, 2014 Waukegan City Council Meeting. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Velco.
Present.
Alderman Rivera.
Present.
Alderman Cunningham.
Present.
Alderman Conken.
Present.
Alderman Moiseo.
Present.
Alderman Beadley.
Present.
Alderman Newsome.
Present.
Alderman Tempest.
Present.
President.
Please stand for the invocation and pledge allegiance. Bishop Coburn.
Father, we thank you again for another city council meeting. We thank you for our mayor, for our aldermen. We thank you for the entire administration. We thank you for all of our department heads, especially our police department, our fire department that goes every day and puts themselves in harm's way for our safety. Pray for me in the name of the Father, Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Bishop. Mayor's comments. Item A, Resolution acknowledging Wayne Munn for his service and dedication to the Waukegan Historic Preservation Commission. Maria, would you please read the resolution?
Whereas Wayne Munn has gloriously and faithfully served the citizens of the city of Waukegan as a member of the Historic Preservation Commission, beginning in September of 2006 through April of 2014. During that time, Wayne Munn served as Commissioner, Chairman from September of 2009 through April of 2014. Whereas Wayne Munn has contributed to the Historic Preservation Commission through his leadership skills, analytical skills, attention to detail, and consideration of the facts of his decision-making. And whereas the Historic Preservation Commission has benefited greatly from the wealth of Wayne Munn's skills and technical expertise in the field of historic preservation, and his efforts to infuse and acknowledge in the quality of the recommendations and decisions of the Historic Preservation Commission. And now there, it be resolved by the City Council of the city of Waukegan, Illinois, that Wayne Munn is awarded this resolution in commemoration of his outstanding years of service to the Historic Preservation Commission of the city of Waukegan, the second day of September 2014.
Wayne, would you step forward, please?
Again, ladies and gentlemen, I volunteer. We need more of you.
I guess I don't have to give my name and address this time, right? But I want to thank you so very much for this honor, especially the Historic Preservation Commission, the wonderful folks that I've worked with. I need to acknowledge some people who are really behind my efforts, you know, for the last 20 years. First, my wife and daughter for their long-term support and involvement for over 30 years. The current and past members of the Historic Preservation Commission. The Carnegie Preservation Project members who saved Ray Bradbury's Carnegie Library from demolition in the 90s before the city of Waukegan took responsibility for its protection and upkeep. The current and past members and leadership of Waukegan Main Street, the Waukegan Historical Society, the Waukegan Park District, and earlier downtown associations that go back 40 years. I want to thank also all of the mayors I've worked with, including Hank Paravonian, Bill Durkin, Dan Drew, Richard Hyde, Bob Sabongian, and now Wayne Motley. And the city of Waukegan City Council members, the department heads, the administration, and staff I've worked with since the early 1990s. So now, I used to be a teacher. Historic preservation is not just keeping old stuff. It can make for a better future. History is valuable because looking back helps us plan how to move forward. Of course, we're only going to be interested in moving forward if we think there's a future. Well, I believe Waukegan has a great future if we make some changes. Consider this. Last month, a milestone for our community was announced on Waukegan's lakefront by Governor Quinn, the EPA, and our congressman and mayor Motley. It was that Waukegan Harbor and lakefront have been declared clean following a 30-year, $150 million cleanup. Press coverage says this should be the start of a new era in Waukegan. Waukegan's lakefront is an amazingly large untapped treasure. Redevelopment of the lakefront, along with other Waukegan initiatives, can bring long-term growth and prosperity to our community. But there's a challenge. Making this happen will require a professional, politically-independent management team such as Waukegan has never seen. This is an opportunity to use history to build a better future. Walk around our downtown. I don't have to tell any of you this. We see examples of Waukegan's prior investments that left our town with crippling debt and brought the taxpayers only meager returns. The problem's not with the investments. The problem is the unmet-for need for accountable management to reap the benefits of those investments. So that's history. What can we do for a better future? As Mayor Motley spoke in favor of during your run for office, Waukegan needs the skills of a city manager. An independent, professional city manager, free of political agendas. A city manager who can help Waukegan in the journey to a more prosperous future. The cost of a city manager can be returned tenfold just through the management and oversight of existing matters. The returns will be even greater when it comes to the redevelopment of Waukegan's lakefront and harbor. A city manager has long been needed in Waukegan. A city manager has long been denied the voters and taxpayers. With the rebirth of a glorious Waukegan lakefront and harbor, and with 30 years and millions of dollars invested, we need to find and hire a city manager. And that's one way I see history showing the way to a brighter future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Munn. Item B, a presentation from Lake County Board members, Bill Durkin and Mary Ross Cunningham. Pearl and Mary, can you step to the mic, please?
Good afternoon, Mayor and his councilors, aldermen. We are here tonight coming for your support from our forest preserve trails, asking you for your support for the trails. Randy Seabach gonna give you a small few minutes presentation, explain to you what Bill is passing out is the map of what we're gonna be doing, and that's why we're here. And Mayor, we have a letter for you from the forest preserve, the contract. This is not the real one, his coming wants to have to sign it all, but we just want to let you know what it is, and we're gonna present it to you. So for the partnership, and we appreciate your partnership. City Council, alderman, we appreciate you, your support for the forest preserve. And Mayor, we appreciate that you talk to your aldermen and let them know what it is about. And we truly, truly, on behalf of the forest preserve, and Randy Seabach gonna give you the little presentation that we have. It won't be long.
Okay. Yeah, go ahead, Mike, yeah, please.
First of all, I'd like to thank Mayor Motley and the council for inviting us or allowing us to discuss a really, really important project. One that will, it's a trail connection that will connect hundreds of homes, two regional trail systems, and three forest preserves, and two parks. And before I did that, I wanted to kind of give a little background as to why it's important. The forest preserve has been working for about 35 years on this network of regional trails throughout the county. And we've been working in partnership with the Lake County Division of Transportation. And the first trail we started about 35 years ago was our Des Plains River Trail, which many of you may be familiar with, which will stretch the entire distance of the county, 33 miles. We have all but 1/3, all but 1,500 feet left, which we just got the property for last month. And so that section, that trail will be done. The next one is our Millennium Trail, which connects central, western, and northern Lake County. It's 35 miles. We have 26 miles complete right now. And then we have another regional trail, which is our Ford Hill Trail. You're moving for me? Our Ford Hill Trail, which is the section here, which will connect the Millennium Trail to the Prairie Crossing Trail in central Lake County. There's also a really small three-mile section, the KC Trail in Greenway, which will connect portions of Gray's Lake to the Independence Grove Forest Preserve. And then lastly is our Middle Fork Trail in Greenway, which is, will connect Lake Forest Trails, Lake Forest Open Lands properties, about 15 miles up to Independence Grove and connect Prairie Wolf Forest Preserve and Middle Fork Savannah. So just real quick, those five regional trails that we've been working on, when we're complete, they'll stretch over 93 miles, connect 26 forest preserves, 24 communities, and 14 schools. In our mind, that's not enough. And so we are going to be in the future looking for these opportunities to connect more parks, schools, communities to this system. And then we've been working with the Lake County Division of Transportation. Some of you may have seen this. It just was passed by the county board, and it's a 2040 non-motorized transportation plan. And it's an effort to map all the municipal trails, regional trails, and then transportation trails, all into one map. It's a wonderful, wonderful map, but what it starts to do is identify these underserved areas that can't get to those regional trails that I mentioned. And the big, and one of those areas is the northeast part of the county. And so what we're asking, what we're talking about today is one of those opportunities to further connect an underserved area. And that section is actually, if, some of you may be familiar, we had our Waukegan Savannah Master Plan, which we approved in 2010, which had a regional trail connection through it. This is, this is our Des Plains River Trail here. Here's Lions Woods Forest Preserve. Here's Waukegan Savannah Forest Preserve. And then you see in this red line is a 6.9-mile regional trail. Has not been built yet. It's in the planning stages. We've had it in the works for about four years. But it's just surfaced, it just surfaced recently as a wonderful opportunity to get started on the first section, which is a two-mile section, which you have in your folder there, which will connect Lions Woods and the Robert McClurey Trail, Regional Trail, to Waukegan Savannah, and eventually through Wadsworth to the Des Plains River Trail. And again, it's two miles, and it will also connect two parks, the Bevior Park and the Callahan Park, to that system, and then primarily go along the Commonwealth Edison Rightaway. And then this is just a blow-up of the same area closer up. And again, here's the two-mile Robert McClurey Path. Here's the Green Bay Road. So that's the two-mile stretch between the two, and the parks are in the middle. So it will not only connect the two forest preserves and the two regional trails, but it will connect into the park district and allow people to come in to those properties as well. And what we've estimated is, our next process is that we think it's a wonderful opportunity for federal funding through the CMAC grant fund, which is a congestion mitigation and air quality fund through IDOT. And what that is, if it's awarded to us, it's an 80-20 split, so 80% of it's federally funded, and the local share is 20%. And with many of those federal projects, you have to have it kind of shovel-ready. And so what they want is, they want you to at least have Phase 1 engineering done. And so this two-mile section, we've estimated the Phase 1 engineering will be about $75,000. And the call for that grant is in January or February. And so we are asking for the council and the city's support on this section, which again will connect hundreds and hundreds of homes to three forest preserves, two regional trails, and two parks. So that's just in a real quick overview. Do you have any questions?
No, no, thank you. Alderman, when Mary Cunningham and Bill Durkin came to my office and asked me to participate in this, the first thing I thought about was my commitment and our commitment to work in conjunction with other municipalities and agencies to get the job done. As you heard, the commitment from the county is $75,000 on engineering study. They're asking us to pay $5,000. I polled every one of you, and the vote was 9-0 to support the county. It'll be coming up under Item D, under New Business. At that time, we will vote on that. So thank you very much for your presentation. Item C, presentation by Madeline Segal of Clockwise Theater regarding Piven Theater Workshop. Madeline?
I'm Madeline Segal, artistic director of Clockwise Theater in Waukegan. I am pleased to announce the Clockwise Theater and Piven Theater Workshop are partnering to offer their award-winning training for 4th through 8th grade students. The Piven Theater Workshop is a nationally acclaimed training center in professional theater. For over 40 years, the workshop has helped thousands of students celebrate play while finding their unique voice through the study of improvisation, theater games, scene study, and story theater. Students at Piven discover the value of improvisational thinking, the training of impulse and instincts, the power of truth and honesty in performance, and the importance of effective communication skills. For more than 40 years, Piven Theater Workshop has been known for populating the talents of the wider regional theater community, as well as the national entertainment community of theater, film, and television. Artists pictured here are just a few who have trained at the workshop, including Jeremy Piven, John Cusack, Kate Walsh, Joan Cusack, James Vincent Meredith, playwright and MacArthur Genius Fellow Sarah Rule, Aidan Quinn, Harry Lennox, and Lily Taylor. For all the spawning of celebrities, the workshop's greatest value over the years has been the many students who have taken into their lives in varied professions and enriched understanding of the human exchange and greater confidence in the value of their unique presence. The two Piven classes currently open for enrollment at Clockwise Theater in Waukegan are theater games and improvisation and scene study for 4th and 5th graders. In this class, the students will learn to build ensemble, jump into improvisation, and begin to explore the Piven approach to scene study. These classes are Mondays from 6:00 to 7:00. And then improvisation and scene study for 6th, 7th, and 8th graders. In this scene study class, focus class, students use the fun and impulsive play of improvisation to create lively characters and realistic relationships. Students will rehearse scenes from contemporary plays under the expert direction of their Piven teaching artist. These classes are Mondays from 4:30 to 6:00. Sessions begin September 15th and run for 10 weeks through November 17th. The skills this experience can provide young people include building teamwork and awareness of community, expand creativity, enhance language skills and comprehension, boost self-confidence, improve social skills, create new learning pathways, promote positive risk-taking, and develop improvisational and storytelling abilities. Money should never be an obstacle to taking a Piven class. Piven generously offers full scholarships, half scholarships, quarter scholarships, $50 scholarships, and flexible payment plans. And their scholarship committee is always accepting scholarship applications. The 4th and 5th grade class is $195, and the 6th, 7th, and 8th grade classes $275. Piven Theater Workshop staff members are always happy to talk to families about the classes and the best fit for their child. Families may call them at 847-866-6597, or email them at info@piventheater.org. Families may also register by visiting the Piven website or calling the same number. Clockwise will also be giving a family, a Clockwise Family Discount Card to all enrolled families. This card will offer Monday afternoon and evening dining discounts at numerous local downtown Waukegan eateries. I invite you all to sign up today, and please spread the word, and thank you all very much.
Thank you, Madeline.
Any questions?
Nope.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. There is no audience time. Item A, under minutes, motion to approve the minutes of August 18, 2014, regular minute, regular meeting. Motion by Alderman May. There is no executive. An executive, oh, I'm sorry, an executive second. A motion by Alderman May, second by Alderman Cunningham. Roll call. All in favor, I'm sorry. All opposed? Mayor reports, Public Works Committee, Alderman Moiseo.
Thank you, Your Honor. Item A, award the bid and enter into a contract with Northern Divers USA of Spring Grove, Illinois for an amount not to exceed $871,075 for the water treatment plant standby generator installation. Funds for this project are available using bond proceeds in line item 555-916-0270. An ISO move.
Motion by Alderman Moiseo, second by Alderman Tempest. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beadley.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Thank you. Item C, solicit requests for proposals for engineering services for Phase 1 and 2 engineering for Doug Dale Road repairs, and ISO move.
Motion by Alderman Moiseo, second by Alderman Tempest. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beadley.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Thank you. Item C, solicit requests for proposals for engineering services for automated water meter reading, and ISO move.
Motion by Alderman Moiseo, second by Alderman Tempest. All in favor?
Real quick, I want to point this out. This puts us on the path of monthly billing, less workman comp claims. This is the right thing to do, gets us going. It gets, like any other utility, they don't bill you every three months, they bill you every month. It's a win-win. If anybody wants to know more about it, they can contact you. This is, this, I've been working on this and harping on it and harping on it, and I'm glad we're trying, we're finally getting it going because it's the way to run the water business the way it should be. Thank you.
And I want you to know that this was spearheaded by this new city collector, George Torres. So he's the one who picked up the ball on this.
Thank you, thank you.
I wasn't at the public works meeting, but does this also include with the automation, we'll be able to do monthly billing?
Yes, yes, yes.
Because that is a, it's a hot topic.
Yes.
I know in my area, it's a very, very hot topic, so.
That's right.
This is good.
No more waiting seven months to cut off water.
No.
Well, not only that, Your Honor, I think for those who do have problems with paying their bill, it's easier to catch that second month versus that quarterly.
Yes.
Understand.
It's a way to do business.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you. Item D, award the bid. Award the bid, enter into a contract with J.J. Henderson of Gurnee, Illinois for an amount not to exceed $4,131,000 for the water treatment plant sedimentation and fluctuation basin repairs. Funds for this project are available using bond proceeds in line item 555-916-0270. An ISO move.
Motion by Alderman Moiseo, second by Alderman Tempest. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beadley.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Thank you. Item F, draft specifications and advertised for bids for a skip-patch program throughout the city and primary arterial streets, and ISO move.
Motion by Alderman Moiseo, second by Alderman Tempest. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Vote aye.
Your Honor, real quick, that money is coming out of a TIF that is out there. That money is going to be paid for by TIF funds. It's mostly just Fountain Square. It's not the industrial park that is to the east of Fountain Square. It's those roads specifically, and that money is coming out of TIF. I want to make sure we understood that. Yes?
Alderman, the, does that go all the way underneath 120, right where you turn into Fountain Square?
It's right where the county left off. I don't know. I'll have Tom give us a map of the exact roads and where it's going to end and start.
Alderman Rivera, it's going to be Fountain Square, Business District, North Point Drive, Fountain Square, and Lake Hurst Drive. That whole.
I think.
I get a lot of calls from underneath 120. Is that part of it?
I don't know. I will get. I doubt, I don't know. I will get a map from Tom that he can give to us, so we specifically know where it's going to start with, okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And I did ask the question there, and he did say yes from where they, just to let you know. Yeah.
Finance Committee, Alderman Velco.
Thank you, Your Honor. Finance Committee met this evening to authorize the payment of the funds for two items, specifically A and D that we just voted on. And the first one was authorizing the use of Series 2012 Water and Sewer Revenue Bond Proceeds to fund the award of a contract to J.J. Henderson of Gurnee, Illinois for the purpose of water system baseline improvements, specifically the repair of sedimentation and flocculation basins in the water plant in an amount not to exceed $4,131,000, and this is coming out of budget code 555-916-0270, and ISO move.
Motion by Alderman Velco, second by Alderman Newsome. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beadley.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
The second item, Your Honor, was the authorization of the use of the Series 2012 Water and Sewer Revenue Bond Proceeds to fund the award of the contract to Northern Divers USA of Spring Grove, Illinois for the purpose of water system baseline improvements, specifically the installation of a standby power generator for the water plant in an amount not to exceed $871,075, and this will be coming out of budget code 555-916-0270, and ISO move.
Motion by Alderman Velco, second by Alderman Newsome. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beadley.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Thank you. Item D, award the bid. Award the bid, enter into a contract with J.J. Henderson of Gurnee, Illinois for an amount not to exceed $4,131,000 for the water treatment plant sedimentation and fluctuation basin repairs. Funds for this project are available using bond proceeds in line item 555-916-0270. An ISO move.
Motion by Alderman Moiseo, second by Alderman Tempest. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item B was held over in committee for revisions, and it will be addressed at the next public safety meeting. Let's move to item C. Authorized to enter into a grant agreement with the Illinois Department of Transportation and accept the 2015 Step Grant Number OP-15-0038 in the amount of $62,288. This was for our work to, for seatbelt enforcement, saturation patrols for DUIs and other such extra patrols, especially around the holidays. ISO move.
Motion by Alderman Conken, second by Alderman Beadley. Roll call, please.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
All are welcome to attend this event. And the other item I have is the Waukegan Fire Department is hosting an open house on Sunday, September twenty-eighth, two thousand and fourteen, from one to four PM at Fire Station Number One at eleven-oh-one Belvedere Road. Uh, the Fire Department welcomes all the public to come and meet all of the technical and, uh, technical teams from the Fire Department, their rescue team, their hazmat team, dive rescue, they'll all be there, and everyone is welcome to attend. So please, if you, uh, have a few hours open on that day, go see the Fire Department. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Conken. New business, item A, approval payroll dated August twenty-second, two thousand and fourteen in the amount of one million, three hundred and ninety-five thousand, nine hundred and twenty dollars and thirty-seven cents, and a final payout in the amount of thirty-four thousand, two hundred and sixty-five dollars and fifteen cents, and manual paycheck in the amount of four hundred and fifteen dollars and eighty-four cents. Motion by Alderman Velco, second by Alderman Newsome. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Beadley.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Item B, approval of bills dated September second, two thousand and fourteen, in the amount of one million, six hundred and fifty-eight thousand, five hundred and ninety dollars and seventy-eight cents. Motion by Alderman Velco, second by Alderman Newsome. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
I have one question.
Go ahead, Alderman Beadley.
Regarding a credit card charge of forty dollars and fifty cents?
Yes.
Says mayor, I'm just curious what that was for?
Uh, that was for a luncheon, uh, at a funeral for one of our deceased officers. They took two of our residents to a dinner.
Oh, I thought it was for a conference, that's what I was told earlier.
Maybe that one was. Harold?
It was for train tickets, that's what I was.
Okay. What did I put on the receipt?
Pardon me?
Because, what did I put on the receipt? Do you know what I put on the receipt? Uh, Tina, was that for the?
It was train tickets for a conference?
Excuse me, one minute. I think that was for the train transportation to Chicago.
When?
When I took.
Yes.
Um, was that, was that what that's for?
Yes.
Because I marked it on the receipt.
It says it's for a train ticket to Chicago, and that's when the mayor.
It was for Noel and Russ Tomlin.
No, that's when you and the two Aldermen went to the Department of Revenue.
Oh, okay, all right, I'm sorry.
On the new sales tax law.
Okay.
I believe, I'd have to look at it.
I don't know, I'm just, maybe it's just me, but I think these things should be coming out of expense accounts that we get every four weeks on our paychecks. I don't know. I, I, the credit cards, in my opinion, need to be turned in and not used anymore. It needs to come out of expense accounts.
Okay. Any, any other, any other questions? Harold, you know what, if you'd like to discuss those with me, um, at any time during the day or week or whenever, please come to my office, and I, I keep the receipts, and on the receipts I put what they're for, so I could better address that for you if, if you want to do that.
I thought we already discussed that.
Okay. Um, roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Beadley.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Item C, approval of block parties. Uh, motion by Alderman Tempest, second by Alderman Moizio. All's in favor?
Aye.
Item D, contributions of Lake County Forest Preserve for the improvement in addition to their walk, walking trails. Um, I'd like to amend this to put the amount of five thousand dollars, which is what we agreed to. Motion to amend by Alderman Cunningham, second by Alderman Moizio. Uh, roll call on the, on the amendment.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Beadley.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Item E, approval of raffle sale application for the Navy League of the United States. Uh, motion by Alderman Conken, second by Alderman Velco. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinances and resolution, uh, A, ordinance adopt and ordinance amending section twenty-one, one-twenty-two entitled limited parking, two hours, anytime, Sharon Road, West Side, between Hazel Court and Belvedere Road. Motion by Alderman Beadley, second by Alderman Cunningham. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Beadley.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Item E, approval of raffle sale application for the Navy League of the United States. Uh, motion by Alderman Tempest, second by Alderman Moizio. All's in favor?
Aye.
Item D, contributions of Lake County Forest Preserve for the improvement in addition to their walk, walking trails. Um, I'd like to amend this to put the amount of five thousand dollars, which is what we agreed to. Motion to amend by Alderman Cunningham, second by Alderman Moizio. Uh, roll call on the, on the amendment.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Beadley.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Item E, approval of raffle sale application for the Navy League of the United States. Uh, motion by Alderman Conken, second by Alderman Velco. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinances and resolution, uh, A, ordinance adopt and ordinance amending section twenty-one, one-twenty-two entitled limited parking, two hours, anytime, Sharon Road, West Side, between Hazel Court and Belvedere Road. Motion by Alderman Beadley, second by Alderman Cunningham. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Beadley.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Item B, ordinance adopt and ordinance amending section twenty-one, one-nineteen, A, entitled all-night parking specific streets, Sharon Road, West Side, between Hazel Court and Belvedere. Motion by Alderman Cunningham, second by Alderman Beadley. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Beadley.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman's time, Madam Clerk, if you would.
Alderman Velco.
Uh, one thing, uh, Your Honor, this evening, uh, please don't forget, the Waukegan Air Show is this Saturday from noon to three-thirty. So please, if you're not doing anything, or even if you are, cancel it and just go out to the air show, because it's, it's something very nice. That's all I have.
Alderman Rivera.
I just have one thing. I, I met, uh, today with, uh, the director of the W-two-C, which is the Waukegan College Organization, who, uh, their efforts, they, they, what they do is they try to, uh, create brighter futures for students and families and communities by preparing students to roll in and graduate from college. They're going to be having a, uh, uh, their second annual Oktoberfest, which is Saturday, September the twentieth, from six to ten PM at the Lake County Fairgrounds. It's going to be live entertainment, dinner catered by bowers, and auction proceeds are to send Waukegan to college youth to Leadership Lab at Augustana in two thousand and fifteen in the operating budget. Tickets can be purchased online at, uh, www.A-B-C-R-S-V-P dot com slash Waukegan to college slash index dot P-H-P, or by contacting Karen Pap at Karen J. Pap at gmail dot com, or two-four-four, four-three-six, zero-eight-nine-three. Again, uh, you can also see this on our website, www.waukegan to college dot org. Thank you.
Alderman Cunningham.
Uh, just, just one thing, uh, just like to invite everyone out to Trinity AME Church, which is located at two-ten South Avenue. They will be celebrating their one-hundred-and-tenth church anniversary, um, on September thirteenth and fourteenth. So, uh, for all those who want to come out and witness one of the, uh, the oldest African-American church in Waukegan, and the second oldest African-American church in Lake County, uh, under direction now of Reverend Janice Brazil Cummings, she's the new pastor, and I tell you, the, uh, it's a lot of history there for those who don't know, and, uh, they're going to be celebrating a hundred and ten years of faithful commitment to our, to our Waukegan community. So that's, that's all I have. Thank you, Your Honor.
Alderman Conken.
Thank you. Uh, school started, and, uh, I've gotten more phone calls over the weekend, or over the past couple of weeks since our last meeting about parking at the schools. Uh, specifically, you know, once again, I'll mention, you know, these schools were built when they were neighborhood schools, everybody walked to school. Um, the issue we got is, you know, something that amazed me, the kids have been playing in the neighborhoods all summer long, but all of a sudden, once school starts, they can't get to school and they can't get home from school in their own neighborhoods, because, you know, that was the whole idea behind the community or school district, uh, changing the borders and letting the kids that are in the neighborhood go to their neighborhood schools. But now all of a sudden, they can't walk to school, they can't walk home from school after playing outside all summer long. Uh, so I don't want to, and it's not the kids' fault, please, but the parents, you have to realize that you can't clog up the streets around the schools and refuse to listen to police officers and teachers when they ask you to move. We have to have, uh, drives and roads open for emergency vehicles to get in. Uh, and if we have to, maybe we'll make the block with the school on it, completely no parking on that side of the street. And I hate to see that, I don't want to force parents and kids to do things they don't want to do, but it's a safety issue that we have to address, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Alderman Moizio.
Pass.
Alderman Beadley.
I just want to get out of here, I didn't realize our air conditioner was broken, I'm freezing up here, I would have worn my one underwear otherwise. I pass.
Alderman Newsome.
Pass.
Alderman Tempest.
Pass.
Alderman May.
I, really quick, I just want to commend the county, uh, the Lake County Forest Preserve District. Uh, the trails in Lake County are one of our gems. I, every trail he mentioned, I've been on either on foot or on bicycle, and so I'm so excited to see them working towards making more connections throughout the county, so hear, hear, Lake County Forest Preserve, you're doing a great job. That's all I have, thanks.
Uh, audience time, Barbara, six-oh-three South McAllister.
She puts Barb there, but it should be Beacon Place, that should be her real natural name now.
Did you grow that pineapple?
No, not here.
Not here.
Um, my name is Barb Karasik, and I'm the director of Beacon Place at six-oh-three South McAllister, and I want to thank you, uh, Mayor Motley and the City Council members for giving me just a few minutes, I promise I won't talk long. Today, I'm here to talk to you about an exciting new program that will assist our community in obtaining affordable quality food. I represent a group of Waukegan community leaders that are working with Northern Illinois Food Bank and Top Box, a nonprofit organization founded by Sheila and Chris, son of Bobby Kennedy, located in Chicago. The mission of Top Box is to offer easily accessible, healthy food, fresh produce, and meat at an affordable price. We are very happy, and I, I am assuming you will also be, that to be one of the three pilot sites in Lake County, to offer this amazing opportunity to our community families. High-quality, low-cost groceries are exactly what you'll receive, they're not seconds in produce or anything, they're right off the truck. Families who purchase the boxes will be saving up to forty percent off of retail. I'm here tonight to ask you for your assistance in spreading the word, it's the only thing I'm asking for, for, to as many people as possible. It's the only thing I'm asking for, for, to as many people as possible. By encouraging people to order from Top Box, we are contributing to the fight against hunger while empowering our community to eat healthy. So a fresh box of produce, and that's an example of what I brought to you today, will cost $10. A fresh, a box of meat will cost 11, and it's a variety of meats, absolutely no pork, but it's a variety of meats, and they'll be different each month. A combination box of fresh produce and meats is $20. Okay? You can use cash, credit, debit, firstborn child, no, just kidding, checks, and your link card. So it's, it's a marvelous, absolutely marvelous opportunity. There is no pre-order. There's no limit to the number of boxes you can obtain, and there is no qualifying for purchases. And I think this is very exciting for our families that are really stretching to keep, keep above the poverty level and, that are working. So I'm really keying towards the seniors. Be a great opportunity for them to split a box like that, or for people that are working and just barely getting by. We will begin monthly distributions of the food on Saturday, September 20th, from 10 to 12 at Carmen Buckner School, which is located at 520 Homelands. We will continue distributing Top Box produce and meat every third Saturday of the month at Carmen Buckner. Any Lake County resident is welcome to purchase the fresh produce and meat. Please, again, help me to spread the word, and as we get more and more people to purchase the items, there will be more items in the box. The price, the price won't change. It'll be the same $10, but there'll be more produce, and there'll be more meat, so it goes on volume. I have flyers and extra posters. We will also be offering this at three other, at two other sites. North Chicago will be having a site at a different day and time, as will Round Lake, and Round Lake starts September 13th. So we have no idea how many people will show up, and we just hope it's just a ton of people and we run out of food and have to do it again. So I thank you all, and from the leadership team, we have a variety of organizations that are working, and Ms. Newsome is one of our members on the team, and Alderman Cunningham is very happy to let us work on, on his location. So are there any questions?
Thank you.
They just don't offer pork, because this is working in Chicago, and a lot of the families in Chicago don't want pork, so they just skip it.
Thank you, Barbara. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Jane Ferry, 531 Leath Avenue.
How do you get sales tax? How do you decide sales tax?
Well, I just thought you'd have to be sales tax.
Thank you. I'm worried about the sales tax.
Thank you.
I'm Jane Ferry, Executive Director of Waukegan Main Street, and with me is Sandy Petrosius, one of my board members. I wanted to point out something. The mayor said that we need volunteers, and this Saturday, we had volunteers at the lakefront helping to keep the beach clean. We will also be doing it the coming Saturday, which is September 6th, at 9:00, meeting at the south end of the beach, and on September 20th at 8:00, also meeting at the south end of the beach. Point out a couple of things. We talked a little bit about Piven classes. This is a big deal for, for Waukegan, and it's a big deal for downtown. This can bring in a lot of different kinds of people, people who are not used to coming to downtown, so please, please, please encourage people to sign up, encourage people to support it. Also, talking about theater, I just handed out the Waukegan Theater Festival, which is going on at Three Brothers Theater. It is five plays over five weekends. You can get a pass for $25, or individual shows are 10. We were, I just went on Saturday to see the first one, and it was really well done, so I encourage you to go down and support Three Brothers Theater. Also, Jimmy's Corner is open at 10 North Sheridan. They have coffee, they have goodies, they have fun things. They are open from Monday through Friday, or Monday through Saturday, rather, from 5:30 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Please go down there and say hello to Brendan, or Brenda, rather, and Quentin, her grandson, who are running it. Please support the businesses in downtown Waukegan. And finally, on September 20th, there are all kinds of things going on, including, of course, Art Walk. But I do want to point out that the Oakwood Cemetery Walk is highlighting Waukegan first, so please look into attending the Oakwood Cemetery Walk. If you have any questions or you're looking for things to do, please look at our website, which is www.waukeganmainstreet.org. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jane.
Brother Blanks, 409 Oak Street. And by the way, no pork is a, is a good thing, considering the high amount of high potential heart attack and blood pressure in the urban community. That's, that's not a bad thing, so. Audience time, mayor, council members. On behalf of the citizens, once again, I noticed at the opening, you said there was nobody to speak for audience time. I, I just think it's only right that when you have people sitting here, and they could easily be speaking in that audience time at the top of the agenda, why have them sitting here waiting at the end of the agenda? I mean, that's, that's really not called for. And so I want to appeal to you, on behalf of the rest of the citizens sitting here, you've got time in the, at the beginning, where there's nobody here. Why not let these citizens come up and speak in the audience time at the beginning of the agenda? What's wrong with that? So that's something to consider, because, you know, I, I could find something on the agenda. I, I know why it was split, but we won't go into that, because I, I could find something on this agenda to speak in both parts, at the top of the audience time, for the agenda time, and at the end. But I don't want to have to do that. But please be considerate towards your citizens here, who shouldn't have to sit here when you have an audience time open, that they can speak at the top of the agenda. As far as with the credit card issue, I think quite the opposite. I don't, I don't think it's something that should have to be discussed behind closed doors or the aldermen's come to the office. I think transparency is what we need here. So I, I don't see nothing wrong with those type of issues being discussed out here before the citizens who are paying these taxes, to be discussed on the issue of accountability and transparency. Nothing wrong with that. And last but not least, you might not consider this as a city issue, but I, I do. When we talk about diversity, one of the biggest things that should, and that we can need more diversity in, is journalism. And I just, you all just think about this, out of all of Lake County, out of all of Lake County, there is not one black journalist in the whole county. And when you're looking for diversity in journalism, I don't think, you know, as far as with the Newsun, since they let go Kendrick Marshall in 2008, there haven't been a black journalist with them. And so, and I know the Newsuns and many of these medias make quite a bit of money from everybody, and Dan, you can print this one, that there needs to be more diversity in journalism here in this Lake County area, that everybody's story is told fair and inclusive. Thank you all for your time and your attention.
Thank you, Mr. Blanks. Before we adjourn, I'd like to advise the aldermen, there will be a special meeting of Public Works on September 22nd at 6:00 p.m. to discuss items F, resurfacing of Fountain Square Business District, North Point Drive, Fountain Square, and Lakehurst Drive, and roadway skip patching citywide. So there'll be a special meeting. What, what's occurring here is these road repairs are time-specific, and they have to be, they have to be done within, actually, six weeks. So Tom asked me to conduct a special meeting just to address those two issues.
Is the committee the whole or public works?
It's going to be a committee of the whole.
The 26th?
The 22nd.
2nd?
It'll take all of five minutes.
No, it'll take longer than that.
Committee of a whole means we can't vote. There might be some voting agendas.
No, it'll be, it'll be, it'll be a special city council.
So it'll be a special council meeting, because, not a committee of a whole, because that means we can't vote. It will be a special meeting that we will vote at.
Do you want 6:00 or 5:00? You tell me.
6:00.
5:00 o'clock? Okay, 5:00 o'clock. 5:00 o'clock.
Now, some of us, some of us still work now.
5:30?
5:30.
I don't care. Whenever everybody's here.
Okay, let's, let's make it 6:00, so everyone gets here. 6:00. Okay, motion adjourned by Alderman Tempest, second by Alderman Conken. All's in favor? Opposed? Meeting adjourned.